Good evening. What a great day to be alive. Welcome to the 20, to the February 25th Jefferson County Board of Education work session. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda? Miss Lister, seconded by Mr. Everett, all in favor? Eyes have it. Thank you. Is there a, is there a motion to approve the minutes of January 28th? Ms. Strange, seconded by Mr. Everett, all in favor? Thank you very much. I am glad to present our superintendent, Dr. Marty Polio, who will now present research on start times.
Thank you so much, Chair Schull. I will not be presenting that, the research. Our research experts will be presenting that. And for the board to know, if you recall, in 2022, we did a similar thing. But at the request of our board chair and several others to start the process again, I want to reiterate, you have already voted on start times for 25, 26. So in no way does this presentation impact next year's start times. But the indication was we would start in February meeting with some research on start times. We would do something else again this summer to be more specific about JCPS. And then finally make a decision in October for the 26, 27 school year, if you would like to keep the same start times or change them based on this research. So this is really, tonight's presentation is more a 30,000-foot view of research of start times from what's happened here in JCPS, what's happening nationally with start times. And then we can answer any of your questions. So this is really the start of a really about a 10-month conversation for you all to make a decision for 26, 27. Having said that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Dossit and she can provide us the research on start times.
Good evening. With me at the table, I have Dr. Chung Fisher. She's an evaluation specialist in our research department and was instrumental in compiling and analyzing the research studies on this topic. So tonight's presentation will serve as an opportunity to provide an update on the research as well as share some preliminary analysis of data on JCPS start times. The last time we presented, as Dr. Polio mentioned, was on research was February of 2022. And in November, the board asked for an update in order to have sufficient time to study all of the considerations for the 26, 27 school year. So our presentation tonight will cover why start times matter, what does the research say about them? How does JCPS start times compare to other large urban districts? What kind of implications it has and the effects on student outcomes, staffing, stakeholder perspectives? But before we review the research, I just want to emphasize that while research findings provide valuable insights, they really should be considered alongside logistical factors when making decisions about district-wide operations. So why do start times matter? Both the American Academy of Pediatrics as well as the American Medical Association has emphasized that early start times, those start times prior to 8:30 contribute to insufficient sleep, leading to negative impacts on student health and academic performance. These recommendations were made nearly a decade ago, but research continues to evolve, providing new insights into the relationship between start times and student outcomes. So to walk us through the latest findings on sleep duration, attendance, behavior, mental health, academic outcomes, I'll now turn it over to Dr. Fisher.
Thank you, Dr. Dossit. So research on later start times highlights several key benefits on student outcomes. In general, studies show later start times are associated with better sleep, improved attendance and behavior, and the better mental health and the safety, and in some cases, improved academic outcomes. However, some findings are quite mixed, and for some benefits, they comes with caveats. So let's dive into each category. Adolescents experience biological changes in their sleep, which make it difficult for teenagers to go to bed early and get up early. So studies show later start times, just a delay of 25 to 60 minutes in start time is resulted in a extra sleep of 25 to 60 minutes among teenagers. Just a small delay of 30 minutes or so can result in a significant increase in sleep duration. However, some researchers mentioned that the sleep effects only last about six months. Later start times also linked to reduced disciplinary referrals and suspensions. A study from Minnesota found delaying start time by about one hour resulted in fewer late arrivals, improved absenteeism, and 14% less likely to receive a behavior referral. However, some studies did not find any differences or any changes between students with later start times and the students with earlier start times. And some researchers found negative effects on the absenteeism. With that said, the findings on the absenteeism and attendance is quite mixed. So more sleep is linked to better social emotional outcomes, less stress, less depression. Another significant benefit of later start times is the reduction in car crashes among teenagers. In Virginia, districts that delayed their start times saw 41% fewer car crashes involved teenager driving compared to districts who did not delay their start times. Finally, while some research linked later start times to improved student GPA, the results are not always consistent. The study mentioned earlier from Minnesota, they also found measurable improvement in student GPA in the second year of their implementation of delayed start times. Another study from Seattle, they reported a 34-minute increase in sleep duration after adapting delayed start times, which correlated with a 4.5% increase in course grades. However, some studies again did not find any effects on academic outcomes, especially on standard test scores. And some studies found both positive and negative effects on academic outcomes. Overall, the primary benefit of later start times is to increase sleep time among teenagers. I'm also a JCPS mom. I have a 12-year-old at home. It is becoming much more difficult for him to go to bed early and get up early. Every night, we had to talk about, don't use too much technology, don't watch too much TV, video games, et cetera. So it is difficult, it is important for our children to get more sleep in order to perform better at the school. However, the results on the effects of later start times on attendance, absenteeism, and academic outcomes are quite inconclusive. While we discuss the research implications, we also need to consider if our local conditions are comparable with the conditions in those studies. For example, some studies use very small sample size. Sometimes in suburban districts with little diversity and a small student population. Some studies took place in large cities with advanced public transportation system, which less depends on the school busing, especially for high schoolers. So it is important for us to look into our local data. So now I'm going to transition into the discussion of JCPS data. In the past three years, we have changed start times twice. 22, 23 school years, we had two start times. 9:05 for elementary, 7:40 for middle and high. Last year, to address the bus driver shortage, we shifted to nine start times. And this year, we have three start times. 7:30, 8:40, and 9:40. Currently, 57% of our secondary schools started after 8:30. Are we perfect? No. Are we on the right track? Yes. We are on the right track in terms of adapting best practices and aligning with the recommendations from the medical experts. So how do we compare with other districts? We looked into 25 large urban school districts around the nation. They posted their start times online. We found the majority of those districts have multiple start times at each level. For example, Denver Public School District, they have about 94,000 student enrollment, which is slightly smaller than us. They have 14 start times at elementary level. They have nine start times for middle schools and seven start times for high schools. Among the 25 school districts, only 27% of them started the majority of their high schools after 8:30. In JCPS, 54% of our high schools start after 8:30. So compared to other large urban school districts, we are more closely aligned with the expert recommendations. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Dossit. She will continue the discussion of our own data.
So I'd like to share some preliminary analysis around what our start times look like in terms of student outcomes. And particularly as it relates to attendance rates, chronic absenteeism, and behavior referrals. So what you see on the screen now, we're able to compare schools that move from an earlier start time to the latest start time of 9:40 and how their data looks for last year versus this year through the first semester. We're also able to look at schools who moved to an earlier start time. So who started at 9:40 in 23, 24, but then moved to an earlier start time. So the top table in green shows those elementary schools that moved to a later start time. And you'll see chronic absenteeism went down, attendance rates improved, and behavior referrals, that's out of per 100 students to account for differences in school size, stayed about the same. But you'll also see that same pattern exist for schools that moved to an earlier start time. So overall, we're seeing that elementary school students have showed improved chronic absenteeism, improved attendance and behavior referrals, either the same or improved. When we look at student outcomes for those schools that stayed the same, so these are only schools where the start time did not change. So it was the same in 23, 24 as it is in 24, 25. And again, what we see for elementary, then for middle, for high, that students showed lower chronic absenteeism, higher attendance rate, and mixed data when it comes to behavioral, behavior referrals. So in general, there's not a lot of clear evidence that any specific start time is associated with better student outcomes. And in general, also, we're seeing improvements in chronic absenteeism over the last few years. When we look at staffing, we were looking at teacher retention rates compared across start times. So again, up at the top, you'll see schools that changed start times and their teacher retention rates. So the first row are those elementary schools that moved from an early to a late start time. Their retention rate increased. The elementary schools that went from a later start time to an earlier, their retention rate actually decreased. Schools with the same start times, so teacher retention, where we had the exact same start times for 23, 24 to 24, 25, the data is mixed on whether retention rates are higher or lower across start times. So again, this is preliminary data. We've had one year of change to, and to, to track. But it's also important for us to, again, look at what the research says around, not just outcomes, but what, what do stakeholders think about different start times? And in a national survey, they found that 51% of parents support a later start time with similar support across social, economic, and racial groups. So if 51% support a later start time, that means 49% do not support a later start time. Likewise, a study that surveyed school administrators found that about half endorsed possible benefits of later start times. So in general, the research is very mixed in terms of what stakeholders perceive in terms of start times and the benefits. Many of the stakeholders, when asked about start times, talked about, again, other logistical considerations, athletic practices, teacher concerns, cost, parent concerns, after-school activities, work experience for older students and childcare logistics. So it's important to consider all of those factors when, when making decisions. And so just to, to summarize key takeaways, most of our secondary schools actually start after 8:30, which aligns with what we hear from the medical community. Chronic absenteeism has improved. The research has both positive outcomes as well as the mixed outcomes in terms of inconclusive effects on academic achievement. And stakeholder perceptions are mixed in terms of the benefits or the preference for later or earlier start times. So what we have seen in the research is that it's important to note that later start times alone doesn't guarantee better sleep or improved academic and social emotional outcomes, but that it's important if we're trying to promote healthy sleep habits, that we have an active campaign around ways that which we can do that in addition to start, changing start times. So with that, I'll turn it over to questions.
Thank you, Dr. Superwoman Dossit, and to Dr. Fisher, thank you for being with us and your wonderful presentation. We'll open the floor for questions. Mr. Bass, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Duncan?
I was curious about if you saw other districts that had the late start time that we have, the 9:40 start time for elementary. Did you run into any districts that had that late a start time?
I think in the council of great city schools, when we looked at the 25 districts, there were several districts that had multiple start times. And we can provide that information around as late as 9:40, but I do know that there were some that started after 9, 9:30.
Is, the start time is pretty cross-board, but the 9:40 is quite late. So we did a look into like how many high schools in particular, we're looking into like after 9:40. I think there are only one elementary, elementary most, I think most of them are like around 50%, of them are 65% of those large districts, they before 8:30, that's this one. On the bottom, 65% of the districts have majority of their elementary schools start before 8:30. So not many of them after, 35% start after 9:00, 9:00 AM.
We have, what, 50, 54% of ours that start after 9:40 starts. You know, I've always wondered, when we talk about start times, of course, the reason we're talking about this one has to do with which ones appropriate for, for our kids, which, you know, appropriate for the levels. But then when we really start talking about start times, we have three start times and we had an option of two start times. And I just wish we could some way survey our parents to see what, in their ideal world, what would they prefer in terms of a start time? What would they prefer that, that their elementary kids start at, at the times that we have now? Or do, you know, would they prefer another start time? So I just wish we could figure out how we could tap into our parents and see what, which direction they want to go and then see how we can meet what they think is, is better for their kids. Right now, all this data is just so, you know, it's, you can't, one start time or another start time doesn't seem to make a great deal of difference in, in these outcomes. They're, they're all very close. We, we show we've, I think, had an improvement in attendance on the, from this year over last year, but what's that from? You know, is that, I mean, they had the same start time last year. So why is attendance better? Are there other factors coming in here that's helping bolster that attendance percentage? But this is a, there, you know, eventually, I hope we get to the discussion about the fact that we, there is a way to reduce the number of kids who ride our buses if we want to go to fewer start times. There, there is a way to do that. And, and that's, and I wish we would have some thought about how we can do that. We took 10,000 kids out of buses this year. And I'm sure other people were probably wondering, well, wow, 10,000 fewer, how many buses was that fewer? And are we getting any closer to just everybody being able to have the two start times with one in the morning and one a little later in the morning? But of course, this discussion is centering on which is best in terms of outcomes for kids to, the older kids to be going later and the younger kids to be going earlier, which is better? And it really doesn't look like there's a great deal of difference on that. I do find it odd that most of the districts, two-thirds have their kids starting early. And then the, and we're just the flip, we're just the opposite of that. We have two-thirds starting later, after 8:30. So is there a reason that we're in that minority? Are we just ahead of the curve? Or is there a reason, another reason that we're in that minority of, of having so many like things?
I mean, my thought on is most of our large districts that are peer districts are larger, are segmented into areas of town more than we are. We have more crossover than any other districts you will find from one part of town to the other. You will find a lot of districts who have magnets, have magnets in certain areas of town that kids will access. So you won't see as much crossover. And so there's, and that is why you see districts with 20 and 30 different start times because they're able to do that. I just think it goes to the history of our district and, you know, just the amount of border to border that we transport students all around this district.
I just, I do hope we figure out a way to tap into parents and get some input from them on, on what they think is manageable, most manageable for them. This is a, you know, our number of buses is our limit, limitation. But I still would like to know how they feel in that ideal world if everybody had transportation or they were able to provide transportation.
50% would like a later start time.
I think it will mirror what we see nationally.
Means 50% would like an earlier start time. So I don't know what to do with that, but.
Well, yeah, I'd, I'd like to know, you know, whether they want the 9:40 or they prefer to go back to the other that we had with the two start times. I would like to know that. But anyway, I thank you very much. Appreciate all that research and, and the presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Everett?
Yeah, I'm kind of along the same vein. Is there a plan to survey teachers? Because I, to be blunt, every teacher I talk to that has a 9:40 start time is miserable. And so I'm wondering, have we surveyed them and is there a plan to survey them? Because we talk about staffing being our number one issue and my worry is for one year, sure, we're doing okay as far as keeping teachers. I just don't see it staying if we stay at 9:40. Is there a plan to survey the teachers to ask this question?
Well, I think we can do that. We can, but I think it's also, I think it's real important to see a second year of transfer data that we can bring to you. So obviously, one year may just, you know, you just never know with one year of data. But bringing a second year of what transfers look like based on start time, I think that's a thing we could do as well.
And then in regards to
And I do want to reiterate, the challenge is someone's going to have to go late. And so I think you, you will hear whoever does go late, if that's high school and middle school, you will hear that as well. So that's the hardest part of.
That, that's fair. I mean, honestly, the majority of what I hear from my constituents and the teachers is that they both want to go back to two start times. I mean, that's what everyone seems to want to do. And that was actually giving my, my question is.
I keep telling Rob that.
Honestly, I love blaming Rob for everything. So that's, that's actually sounds great. But that was actually my second question is if we hadn't had the bus driver shortage, would we have stayed on two start times? Was it purely driven by the bus drivers to change the nine and stay on the three this time?
We had discussed, I would, yes, I mean, the ideal situation would be on two start times. We had discussed as early as 2019 in my tenure of looking at high school kids and middle school going later. So flipping the two, I think that would be our ideal situation if we had the bus drivers that we needed. So that was the original talk, but then the shortage of bus drivers kind of forced our hand into having a multitude of start times. There really are no other large districts that have two. But I do think that would be the ideal situation and then to flip the two with elementary going first and middle and high going second.
And then to your point earlier, I'm assuming that the districts, like I said, New York has like 58 start times. The way we could do that is if we had a more segmented district where people kind, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, cool. Thank you guys for all your hard work.
Ms. Lister?
Thank you for this report.
I just have a couple, or maybe just one observation really. So I assume that the American Academy of Pediatrics, the AMA, and these review of all these different studies, that, that they were looking at all the various factors that were going into it and that they were more thorough studies and not not something that was just over a small group over a year. So I'm just hesitant for us to discount all of those studies saying there's value, there's value, there's value by saying, well, look, we look at, at our school system for a year and we don't see the benefit. So I just think we should be careful that that's not, we don't know what the other factors are. It's only one year. It's a very small sample. So these other experts and resources saying we see benefits should have more weight.
Right. I will say the studies that we reviewed were peer-reviewed journals, so they were high-quality research. But I do think it's also important to say that when you're looking at these studies, to look at the sample size, to look at the comparability, the
Um, comparability, the generalizability of those findings to um, our local context, but. Um, you're correct, we looked at um, a semester of data this year versus a semester of data last year, so it is very preliminary.
I think as we reviewed it, we did see some benefits. I mean, when you looked at, and it's hard, causality is impossible here to say that one thing. Caused this to happen, so we're very hesitant to use that at all. We did see the later start times and actually a larger decrease. In chronic absenteeism. Um, all of our magnet schools go early, which traditionally have much lower chronic absenteeism. Um, and so, but we did see great, but once again, to your point, it's one semester of data. It is a snapshot in time. I think it would be important to have data at the end of the year. And then data at the start of next year when making this decision as well.
Thank you. Excuse me, and I also just want to echo what he said, what I'm hearing from constituents is. I want two start times and nobody likes the nine forty start time. Thank you.
Ms. Strange.
Yeah, as I read this, um, I did see that it was very preliminary. And so um. I think it would be helpful, like you said, to have this at the beginning of. Next year so that we can keep a running tally and really compare apples to apples. Um, but yeah, I think it's universal, nobody likes the nine forty start time. But thank you all for the work.
Nine forty bed, thank you very much.
I just want to flag for the board that the reason why we're having this discussion in February. Is because we do want to keep track on the data so that we can make a more informed decision. When um, we have to revisit start times and revisit transportation matters. Uh, we didn't want that to be a decision that the board makes under the gun. Or we want you to have a long runway to process uh, the data to keep. Abreast of the way that um, the data is 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 presenting us with a picture of how the district is evolving. And also to to keep tabs on what peer districts are doing across the nation. So that's the reason why we're having this discussion today. That's the reason why the data is preliminary and uh, we'll continue to keep our eye on it so that when the time comes for us to make. A decision about start times in the future, we'll be better prepared for that, for that decision. Dr. Dorsett, thank you. Dr. Fisher, thank you. Have a good evening. Now, um, Dr. Polio, he kicked the ball to Dr. Dorsett for the research on start times, but I'm sure you're gonna present the research on cell phone.
Every single page of it.
Okay.
I am not. Um, thank you very much, um. Uh, Chair Scholl and board members. Um, we know this is one of the most controversial topics in schools. Uh, and will continue to be, no matter what decision that you all make around cell phones, it will continue to be a controversial decision. As it is nationally, uh, there is a clear movement nationally to not to ban, so to speak, cell phones in schools. We want to make sure you all have what our current policy is right now, what has happened as a result um, of this, so we handing out books. Which is an excellent read, I will say that, that's a fantastic book. I guess I guess that's why you didn't give me one. Sorry, I'm just kidding. I I've got one, I'm just kidding. Um, and so I want to um, a couple of things to keep in mind, there is a bill in Frankfurt right now. Uh, that if passes would require districts to implement a policy that bans cell phones. Uh, so I think this is a a good preliminary discussion for that, if that passes. Um, I would say this too, as we, you know, I, I'm not so sure the um. The issue is whether to have cell phones or not, it is what necessarily to to about them when kids do have cell phones. This has been a growing issue uh, that has been with schools since about twenty ten is when we started seeing significant issues. Um, and it's only gotten harder as more kids have had cell phones. The cell phones may be even smaller, the technology they have is easier to get around adults seeing it. And it's used more in instruction than it's ever been used before, so all of those are factors that are put into play. Um, and we will provide you with this presentation and then as we go forward. Um, not necessarily tonight, but we'll entertain any motions or movements that the board wants to make towards this. Uh, so I believe I'm starting out with Robert Moore, are you starting it? Jonathan Lowe is starting, I've already messed it up. Jonathan Lowe, you're up first.
I'm Jonathan Lowe, I'm the executive administrator for for policy and systems. And I'm gonna start off by um, sharing some information about what the state law currently says. What our board policy says, because we do have a policy on cell phones and then talk a bit about sort of trends that we see. Uh, nationally in different school districts and public opinion on them, on the issue. And then finally, I'll share some research that Dr. Dorsett's group put together, kind of as as a high level um, thing. So the the first thing is, um, there is a state law uh, regarding cellphone use in schools. And really what it says is each board has to have a policy regarding how they're going to be used in schools and it's. Um, pretty, um. It's limited to that, um, so we do have a policy in conjunction with that. And our our own policy, let's see. So currently, our policy says that um, students will not have used cell phones during the instructional day, so. During instructional time. There was a time uh, in twenty nineteen, twenty fourteen, fifteen, when a a number of high schools. Received a waiver from that to permit and there was a, you know, thinking along those lines that it could be part of. Um, used in instruction and in an in a different and new way. Um, tho- those waivers have since lapsed and so are no longer in 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 effect. And then up. Sorry. So we also have a set of policies and procedures that kind of establish. Inappropriate behaviors with the use of cells, cell phones during those times when when it's permitted. And um, you know, establishes that the student support and behavior intervention handbook. Um, progressive discipline shall be used, um, those kinds of things. We recently, in in the past year, kind of. Also addressed the issue of what happens when um, there's. Reason to believe that um, students are sexting or using um, devices in a way where there's inappropriate images on there. And now that we have a police force, they're involved in sort of um, doing that investigation, the confiscation of. Cell phones and then the return, so we have a do have a structured policy around all of that. And then in with regard to sort of like what it looks nationally, um, currently there are eight states that have laws that. Put some form of restriction on the use of cell phones during schools, some of them ban it altogether and some. You know, during instructional day, um, there are another fifteen states in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Who have legislation that's been introduced to address this issue. You also see, you know, um, state level. Leaders um, weighing in on that, so. That is um, certainly the case. There was a bill last year that um, that uh, did not pass in the general assembly. And that bill has been reintroduced as Dr. Polio said this year, House Bill two oh eight, it hasn't, it has not moved. Um, and you know, time is relatively short during the session, but it certainly could move if if they wanted to. Um, and that part, that law would essentially, if it were to pass. Would prohibit the use of cell phones during the instructional day with a certain exceptions relating to. Um, what happens during an emergency and what happens for students who use that device for. Maybe a medical condition or perhaps as a uh, an accommodation. Uh, for a disability, those kinds of things, so there is, would be space for each district to kind of build a policy that that makes sense. With regard to national uh, opinion, it's two thirds of adults support some kind of restriction. Um, a restriction during the instructional day. Um, one third would like to ban the whole thing altogether. And there are reasons that you would expect them to have, um, and this is, you know, a recent October twenty twenty-four Pew. Um, poll, but fewer distractions, better social skills, less cheating, reducing bullying with things that said. For the third of people who are um, you know, interested in. Um, who would not like a ban, they have their reasons as well. Most of them is is about parents being. Interested in um, reaching their their children in an emergency and so. That's maybe a consideration on like what our policy might look like if if that were where you wanted to go. And then um, a recent poll by NEA shows that ninety percent of uh, teachers or NEA members that were polled. Um, support a a ban during the instructional time. And then just briefly on research, so as I said, this is again. You know, a summary that was created by Dr. Dorsett's team of peer reviewed research um, and doing an analysis broadly speaking. They it kind of looked at four different parts, academic performance, mental health, cognitive development and social interactions. Um, and under academic performance. Unrestricted cellphone access is associated with lower student achievement. It diminishes note taking, recall and test performance. On mental health, um, as. One might. Understand, um, heavy cellphone use is linked to increased rates of anxiety, depression and social phobia. And then um, for cognitive development. Um, it's associated with shorter intention spans, uh, lack of focus, sleep disruptions and all of that kind of. Yeah, is likely or possibly can impact um, you know, student learning. And then on social interactions and development. Restricting cellphone use has shown, been shown to be associated with a reduction in bullying. And the use of unrestricted cellphone use during classroom can reduce. Uh, student participation in discussion or group activities or focus on. You know, instruction and kind of the reason why students are in classes.
Uh, thank you, Jonathan. Um, good evening, board members. Um, I'm here for a couple of reasons. Uh, one is to. Uh, tee up uh, Dr. Nicholas, Principal Nicholas, uh, and uh, make sure she gets out here in a timely fashion this month. And um, and and two, just to highlight a couple of schools, just to communicate, there are other schools. Who are uh, who have some school management strategies in place, it's not just Fern Creek. Uh, just want to hi- highlight some of those schools and there's two high schools on here, but ultimately, no matter the school. Um, the there's, there's two overarching goals. One, uh, we want to limit distractions and increase uh, student engagement. Uh, I think that's part of the the limit in cellphone usage in in classrooms and uh, that's. And that's also important that we communicate that uh, to teachers, because now these cell phones are down. You're gonna have twenty-five to thirty sets of eyes on you, you have to keep them engaged. So uh, that that is a different level of communication we have to have with our 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 teachers as as well. Uh, and then uh, keeping, uh, we want to keep students in class, we want to make sure these low level offenses don't uh, lead to higher level offenses, so. That's the ultimate goal when uh, implementing some of these school management uh, strategies. The two examples that I have up there are uh, DALS. And Seneca. And uh, right now, this year, I believe DALS started uh, and the second semester Seneca's been going all year. Uh, school wide for all classrooms, uh, during instructional time, cell phones are not to be out. If they are out, they are bagged uh, within the classroom. Uh, and um, I I, they they do not have any yonder pouches or anything, they just bag them. In a, in a paper bag and keep them geographically close to the students and the students get those uh, those back uh, right afterwards. Cause just uh, if you think about student development and and children, I mean, when they are disconnected from that. Device and it is geographically away from them, just thinking about, they feel like they're disconnected from the world. Uh, so just keeping it close helps reduce that uh, those other level offenses and I I'm. The the first time I remember being at a um, going to a comedy show with my wife and they threw my bat, my phone in that yonder pouch. And I I guess I didn't read the directions and um, it it it's shocking in at first, like, oh, it's what I'm, what I'm gonna do. Uh, but um, thankfully, the uh, show was very engaging. Um, but um. But it was, it was a shock and I'm an adult, so just knowing what that could do to um, a child. And um, they are allowed to have them during class exchange and in the cafeteria, so there's still that level of management by adults. Um, uh, managing that, because they're gonna have to transition back into class and those expectations are back uh, of no cellphone usage. And then if it continues, you can see progressive discipline according to SSBIH, uh, if continued use during uh, class time, so. Um, th- those are uh, two school examples. Uh, Fern Creek has a much more comprehensive schoolwide strategy. Uh, that uh, Dr. Nicholas is gonna share with you.
Thank you. Hi, um, I'm Rebecca Nicholas, I'm principal at Fern Creek High School. Um, the book that is in front of you was kind of the foundational text for much of our work. And that was given to you by Mr. Christian, he's an assistant principal at Fern Creek and I need to give him his due. He approached me probably last February and said, we need to go after cell phones, are you with me? And I was like, oh, I'm so tired. Um, but if you do all the work, I will be with you and so so much of this work was his and so I want to give him credit for that. We followed pretty much a classic change theory process for Fern Creek, um, and the first step was to form a committee. We had teachers, we had parents, we had classified staff, we had admin on there. Um, and that guiding coalition really started with the book that's in front of you, so if you do have an opportunity to read it, I I definitely urge you to do so, it's a. New York Times twenty twenty-four bestseller, like, it's not too boring, I promise. Um, and it really kind of lays out the case for phone-free schools. Um, so our guiding coalition went through some options and eventually landed on a completely phone-free environment. Um, to that end, we did decide to purchase yonder pouches, which is just really a tool. I don't think it's the solution and I do want to start with that. Whatever your school decides is going to work for you. That should be the decision that's based on the work of the people in the school, the people in the district. Um, I don't think there's any one solution. Yonder pouches were the right choice for Fern Creek, um, and they're working well for us. We did survey our stakeholders, we let student voice be a part of the process, we surveyed our parents, we surveyed our community and we surveyed our teachers. Um, and that pretty much gave us a mandate, even our students let us know that we are distracted, we need help controlling this. Um, we did our research, we met with different vendors, we went to different schools. Um, again, decided like this is the process that we want to use. Um, and even in that, there are growing pains. We use, you know, classic come to consensus kind of strategies to say, like, are we going to be phone free the whole day? Are we gonna let them have their phones during the lunch period? Um, and really tried to work through that as a committee so that we did, even if it wasn't. You know, it it wasn't unanimous, we did come to consensus. Um, we ran it through culture climate, we had them in our meetings as well, we ran it through legal, uh, high school office. We obtained all the approvals that we needed to obtain and until everyone felt really good about our plan. Um, and then we shared it with our kids right before we let them out of school at the end of the year and they were like, oh, but we let them know. Um, this is going to be happening. We had a parent meeting where we invited all parents in so they could see the pouch, they could ask their questions. Um, through Academies of Louisville, we are partners with Fern Creek Fire Station and. They weighed in in terms of crisis management, which was really the number one concern that our parents brought to us, what happens in a crisis? Um, and one of, you know, some of the feedback we got from EMTs and first responders is that. Honestly, in a crisis, your child's cellphone is a hindrance. We want one message. Um, we want to be able to communicate with that school clearly. We know that you want to talk to your kids, but if we're just talking safety, we promise you they're safer this way. Um, and that really helped kind of allay some of the fears that our parents had brought to us. We also invested in some resources, you know, I have two teenagers too, and sometimes I need to text them things like, hey, take the bus home. Um, so we have an extra clerk who just takes messages from parents and we give those to our kids. We have a process for our school drop offs, you know, if you drop off something, you don't need to text your kid that it's there, we'll make sure that they get it. Um, and so just tried to meet some of the concerns of our parents and make sure that they felt comfortable with the process as well. Um, those community meetings went a long way and we started off on the first day of school um, with our pouches. We are phone free from about eight forty-two. I get on the announcements every morning, I say, we're phone free, put them away. And they are allowed to have their phones at the end of the school day at three twenty and they do not have their phones at any other time. Now, if there is an emergency, they can visit any of the offices. Um, we do have students with five oh four plans with medical monitoring devices, we accommodate all of those students, they all have. Either a pouch with Velcro or some other accommodation that helps them and their parents feel comfortable about not having their phone always at the ready. And a big part of implementation for us is scrimmaging, I scrimmage everything. Um, I have a really, really talented admin team, um, and a lot of people have been at Fern Creek for a really long time, but it was important for us to all be on the same page. So if we have a student who says, you're not get my phone, I don't care what you say, um, how do we respond to that? How do we implement the student code of conduct with fidelity? How are we consistent in our reaction? Um, and how do we relay the data to our stakeholders? Our culture climate uh, committee at school does regular surveys that mirror the CSS. Um, with the same verbiage, um, and on our last one, forty-four percent of our students felt like they were learning more than they did last year. Um, ninety percent of our teachers felt like students were more engaged than they were at this time last year. And for January surveys, that's pretty good because not everybody's really happy in January. So we are super excited about the process. I would say of all the people, our teachers are the happiest. Anecdotally, there's plenty of data that helps them, helps us know how they feel. And if you're ever interested in any of that data, you're more than welcome to come out to Fern Creek. We have seen academic gains, fewer failures, higher GPAs, more engagement in class. We, with regard behavior, I do think that there is always going to be a blip. As you know, Chief Moore referenced, when you take away the anesthetic that is a cellphone, you will see students act like students. And those behaviors kind of peaked a couple of months after implementation and now they've leveled off again as students get used to the process of not having their phones with them in school. Overall, it was an investment. We have a very generous alumni association. They are the ones who bought those books for you and also procured the pouches for us. Not every school has that, but there are ways to fund a tool if that is something that a school district is interested in doing or an individual school too. So if you have any questions, you're always welcome to come out to Fern Creek and see it in action. If you want to see the pouches, if you want to see our classes, we welcome it. I think the more voices that we have in the conversation, the stronger our implementation can be, the better we serve our community.
All right, I'm Maddie Shepherd. I'm here to share the teacher perspective. I'm the president of the Jefferson County Teachers Association. And in order to offer some on the ground perspective from how teachers are experiencing this in classrooms and schools, we did a survey and we'll be sharing the results with you. That's largely support everything Jonathan Lowe mentioned with the National Education Association survey. Likely what you've heard anecdotally from your teacher and maybe parent constituents and the anecdotal positive feedback from Fern Creek as well. Most of our respondents were in middle and high school. That's where we see the largest presence of cellphones. Most of our respondents, almost eighty percent, said they almost never or only once in a while use cellphones during class for schoolwork. My guess is that's largely attributed to the fact that there's a lot of other technology available in schools for instructional purposes. Most of our teachers also indicated, almost ninety percent in fact, that cellphones hurt a great deal or some when it comes to student learning in the classroom. Similarly, almost eighty percent of teachers reported that cellphone use in class is very harmful or at least somewhat harmful to safety in a school environment. Almost ninety percent of our teacher respondents said that there is at least some and most of them, the the green bar you'll see there, said that cellphones interfere quite a bit or a great deal with students positively engaging with one another at school, which does have a direct relationship with our safety concerns. Teachers also overwhelmingly reported that it's not easy for them to manage student use of cellphones in class. They're often on the front lines of that situation and teachers would rather not be involved in a power struggle and and be involved in instructional and engaging learning experiences. Over seventy percent of our teacher respondents said that students use cellphones for things not related to instruction at all, like texting one another, social media, that sort of thing. And about seventy five percent, again, the overwhelming majority of teachers reported that cellphones are at least quite a bit, but most of them said a huge distraction to students in the classroom. And then lastly, our teachers also overwhelmingly reported that cellphone use in school contributes a lot to bullying. The presence of cellphones allows students to plan for bullying events and the removal of cellphones, we believe will create the conditions for that not to occur and for the capturing of bullying and the sharing of bullying not to happen either. So in summary of the results, overwhelmingly, teachers experience cellphones in classrooms as a huge distraction, has little or no contribution to learning and is really difficult to manage in terms of building relationships and does contribute to potential safety issues. We also asked teachers what their priorities would be in the elements of a support plan or a policy. And the top responses are follow through, shared responsibility and ease of implementation. I think what we've heard from our teachers at Fern Creek and a lot of the other schools that have more comprehensive policies that the conditions have been created for follow through and for shared responsibility. Dr. Nicholas talked about that collaborative committee structure that happened last year that involved a lot of different types of stakeholders from different groups. When you involve, you know, everyone in the community, then you create the conditions for increased probability of follow through and shared responsibility, which again were two of the top priorities to our teachers when asked.
All right, I wanted to finish up with some considerations that I think the board should think about when it comes to policy and some of the implementation considerations moving forward. I want to say this, I don't think there's any doubt from what you heard that cellphones are harmful to kids in schools. Probably everywhere, if you read this book with the amount of screen time there is, this is proliferation, you know, year after year, excuse me. So I don't think there's any doubt about it. Continuous concern is the technology companies are going to stay in front of us to continue to make products that make it easier for kids to access. That, you know, is not something that's just going to say, okay, we can yonder pouch this and they're not going to look towards ways for kids to have different types of tools to get around that, whether that's glasses in the future. I mean, no telling what that will be moving forward. But I think there is little doubt that what we've seen is it's it's harmful to kids and it's frustrating to teachers. So some of the considerations I want you to think about is is it the existing board policy with additional enforcement? Or does the board make a new policy that updates this with more specific language? I think a big one is do you want to standardize district policy versus school level discretion? So I think the power of the Fern Creek model is that was organic from the school level, making decisions based on what was best for their community. The more that becomes standardized from the district level, the less buy in there will be and the more difficult it will be to do what Fern Creek did. So but, you know, on the other side of that coin is the more autonomy, there are more, some schools could have, you know, like Fern Creek with very little cellphone usage at all and some continue on with the way it is right now. But I think that's an important consideration. I think policy differentiation by level, do you want it to be by level? There's not a lot of elementary school teachers responding, but we are starting to see that, guys. Fifth grade, fourth grade, you're starting to see cellphones in our kids' hands. So I think that will continue to do that. I think an important one, do you prohibit it all day? They don't have it all day like Fern Creek does or is it just during instructional time? I think that's an important thing to remember as well. I mean, this is a big one. If a kid has a cellphone out, does the student retain possession? Or does the teacher collect that phone? And at the beginning of the day, do we just say no phones are out? Or do we do something like a yonder pouch where the kid has to put it in and they do not have access to it? And so, you know, that's an important instructional one too. And then, as you know, we would have to provide exceptions for medical monitoring and emergencies as Dr. Nicholas said as well. So, I mean, those are all the intricacies of a policy that are important. I don't think it just is, okay, no cellphones, voila, they're gone. Once again, the most difficult part is the enforcement part of it and what to do about that. Some of the considerations I want you to think about if the board does go to no student cellphone policy. You know, how are we going to have intentional expectations like Fern Creek did for all students, parents and school employees? So I think what they did such a great job of was starting early, getting in front of it, saying this is our decision, not a superintendent, school board decision. And sorry, parents, we have to do this because they're telling us we have to do it. If that is the case, it wouldn't be like Fern Creek is and are, which is, you know, they owned it at the school level. So I think that's a big part of it. We have to know there's going to be an increase in behavior data. There is no way around that. If you are going to take something this large from students that and and hopefully, as Dr. Nicholas said, that will level off. But there is definitely going to be an increase of behavior data and probably an increase in suspensions as a result of this. I don't see any way around that. You know, we will say we want to minimize the amount that teachers have to be involved in this and enforce this. But we also know teachers often are on the front line in the classroom when a kid's pulling it out. And if there's only two or three assistant superintendent, I mean, excuse me, assistant principals in the school, there is still going to be some level of expectations for those that are teaching class to follow through on this. You know, we have progressive behavior consequences to minimize this, but this could end in lost instructional time, whether that's in in school suspension or suspension for that. And so, you know, I just want you to consider those things once again. I will say this, I believe the right course of action is to minimize or get rid of all cellphones out of kids in the in the classroom as much as we possibly can. I really think that's important. But I also want this board to know it's just not a clean, okay, they're gone and we should never see them again. Because it is difficult and challenging for schools to deal with this issue now and it will be in the future either way. So just wanted to provide those perspectives. We're happy to take any questions or feedback that you have. Mr. Bass?
Yes, thank you for the information. But the question is, for the medical purposes, would there be any training for the staff for them to kind of know about the device? So for example, I have diabetes and I have a Dexcom and there's different sounds. So would the training possibly be available for them? And then my other question is, do you all plan to possibly partner up with Norton's or U of L Health to kind of educate and give them more of a solid foundation? Because this is my third year with the Dexcom and I'm still learning things. So I can only imagine a high school kid with juvenile diabetes and how they have to take that.
So we do have a school nurse and she's amazing and she worked with counselors. We looked at five oh four plans. We surveyed parents. We said, tell us what you need. We met individually with parents and students and our nurse, like, how will this work for you? How will it look? We don't want you to feel like you're you're having to do something special or different. Most of their monitoring was scheduled with our nurse, so there really wasn't a lot that was different. I think our our process moving forward is to be flexible, to invite parents into the conversation. You know, and and really work with them and work with our school nurse to say, these are the moments when the student will need access to their device. This is the schedule for monitoring. It, you know, we have students who have alerts for they're having a seizure. And just the other day, we got a call from the parent. She said, I think my student's having a seizure. Find her right now. She had actually just run up the stairs and was laughing with her friends and so it was fine. But it was important for her to know that we had a line always open and that we were always monitoring all of those things. So it really does have to be kind of that collaborative effort.
Thank you. And my last question actually is, do we possibly, well, is there possible a chance where we can have a device where it shuts out Facebook and those other applications in which those children are using during the class time to stir up things or?
So if we have a teacher, we have a cinematography class and often he will want them to use their phones. So if that is the case, we just ask our teachers to give us a heads up and we'll bring the magnet to that class if need be. There is a magnet and I think we have it if you want to take a look at it for a specific purpose. All we ask is that teachers let us know, like, this is for a specific purpose. I haven't decided to just pitch all the expectations for these kids that we're using them in this limited capacity for this limited amount of time and students know that as well.
I do not think it's possible, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, to block a school's cellphone usage, I think is what you were asking. Is that correct?
Like, you know how, like Facebook apps? I know in some, I know when I was in school, I couldn't even get on my Yahoo account because it was K proxy was being blocked. So I didn't know if it was possible where there was a device where or a program where Twitter or nothing was able to even be pulled up from their phones, just in case they were able to get out of the package and stuff like that.
Come on up, Eric, if you could answer that, please.
No, yeah, we can block if they're running on our network, but on a cellular network, we can't. So, yep. Right, yeah, if it's on Wi-Fi, we have agents can block.
There's no further questions, sorry.
Ms. Duncan?
Rebecca, I'm having, I don't understand the pouch procedures. So how does that happen? How do the phones get in the pouches? Then where do the pouches go?
Can you give me the pouch, Mr. Christian? He's like my Vanna White over here. He's just got everything. So again, these are, this is just one version of a tool. So these are yonder pouches and they are magnetic. So if you want to give me your phone, I get on the intercom and all of our teachers know, like, we are phone free. Is it hurting you to watch it go away? So this is, you know, Chief Moore referenced it. There is proximity. These students hold this. These are issued to our students just like they are issued Chromebooks. They have barcodes in them and we know this is your pouch. So even if you left it in the cafeteria, which sometimes happens, we'd be like, oh, well, that's his and we get it back to him. We never touch phones. I don't want to touch a phone. I don't want to search a kid. I don't want to hold a phone. There is such a visceral connection to phones that it's not something I want to mess with. So a student puts their phone in the pouch along with earbuds. We really haven't had to have a rule about smartwatches. We've said, like, if we see it being an issue, then we'll address it. But right now, it's really earbuds and phones and they'll both fit in here. And then they are gone for the whole day. Again, if you need to step to an office, if you need to access something, we also allow them to, there's a special table at lunch where they can access their phone if they need to. They actually never do it, which is really weird. And the one time that, I think it's Mr. Christian's favorite story, I thought there'd be just a mass like, like crowd trying to get to this table. And it turns out, no, no kids actually really want their phones at lunch because no other kids are on their phones at lunch. And so it's never populated. It's four seats that nobody ever sits in because nobody ever accesses their phone, which is really weird and I was wrong about that and he was right. So at the end of the day, there are magnets like this that go back up on all of the stations throughout the school. We also have stations in every office and you just open it up again. So they take their pouches home. We don't have pouches at all. It's not an issue for us during the day. We had, we give you the pouch, you're in charge of the pouch for the year. I will say it remains to be seen how we're going to handle collection at the end of the year, just like Chromebooks, we anticipate some loss. But really, it is, it's putting in the students' hands in terms of literally and figuratively, like you have control of your phone. It is not ours. We're not taking it. In terms of a crisis, these can be accessed with medical grade scissors. So we bought those for all of our teachers too. So let's say worst case scenario, there is a lockdown and you're in a classroom. They can always get into these pouches. Too. So that that helps as well. I think the pouches themselves are interesting. Like I said, I don't think it's the answer for every school. It was the answer for us.
But it's the, it's something they carry with them.
Yes, they have it. Some students hang it around their neck or, you know, they put it in their backpacks. And I'll be honest, if you don't put it in there, I probably won't know because we don't search kids. I don't touch, I don't touch students. I don't touch backpacks like the phone is away. Now, if there's an issue, we'll deal with it. Take out, take out your pouch, put it in your pouch. Come on, let's get this done. But for the most part, it's just an automatic part of their day now.
Dr. Nicholas, can you show, was that thirty five thousand dollar cost for the school?
So we have about eighteen hundred kids, so it was thirty five thousand dollars for us.
So just so this board knows, that will be a consideration. If it is mandated, will this board then pay for that? So you're looking at probably two to three million dollars of expense. If that's, if that was across all schools and that was a part of the policy, it would be two to three million dollars. So just wanted to keep that in mind.
Yeah, right now, our policy is that there, the phones aren't supposed to be out during instructional time or during the instructional day. So do we still have schools who have waivers to be able to not follow that?
No, we don't.
And yet, everybody is using the phones, so the ban itself is is kind of meaningless.
I think that will have to be a part of the policy discussion is what, what then, it's not as much about the ban, it's what, how to, how to attack it like Fern Creek did. My guess is years before, it wasn't just, okay, everyone use your phone whenever you want, but now they put some real teeth behind the work that that they did with it, if I'm summarizing correctly.
I will say that their attention span changed. And what I saw as a principal is that even my very, very best teachers couldn't hold their attention anymore. And that's when it became an issue that, you know, I, we decided we needed to act because it, it was interfering with instruction. They couldn't do what they were there to do.
Well, I do think we can see a consensus about Well, I do think we can see a consensus about instructional time that the phones should be gone during instructional time. And we had, but about 60% of our parents who want to be able to contact their students during the day for whatever reason, some medical reasons. So we we have that to think about as well. When we think about just taking them away, I don't think, I don't think we're going to be at that point. But then we've got another, well, we we just have to figure out, well, 63%, I guess, I said of the of the teachers who said they really didn't want to be enmeshed in the enforcement of this, and yet they're the front line for this. So it's the enforcement is the key. However, we figure out how this can be done, whether we're going to just go with confiscation and dealing with consequences or whether we're going to use pouches. But for me, pouch sounds like a very promising idea and it is a way to assert some control over that. They can get access, but they don't have it automatically all day long. So.
I want to make a point of clarification about the 60% of parents who want access, you know, to allow them to talk to students. That's 60% of the 32% who do not want to ban. So there are actually 68% of parents who are asking for restrictions. So that it's a much smaller number than the 60%.
Okay.
And I would highly discourage, as Dr. Nicholas said, any confiscation of cell phones. I think that is, I would really discourage that in any way.
Well, it sounds like the pouch is is the best way to go. And I appreciate the fact that you all have laid such groundwork for this, for all the rest of us to to watch and and learn from. So thank you.
Mr. Everett?
Matty, from a teacher's perspective, again, we have this policy, but it's not being enforced. Is the main reason that you hear from the teachers that it's not being enforced is because they feel their administration will not back them up because they are on the front lines and they have to confiscate? What are you hearing as far as why they feel like they cannot get these out of these kids' hands?
It's a number of reasons. What manifested at a recent professional representative meeting where we gather reps from all of our schools and we had the PR from Fern Creek present. One of the things that they started with was the existing policy. There were teachers in the room that didn't know we had a policy. I think to expand a little bit on something that Board Member Duncan said, is it isn't the teachers don't want to be in a position to enforce this? They don't want to be the sole enforcers. And I think that's a big difference that we've heard from our teachers at Fern Creek is that there is a real partnership and there is real follow through. Whenever you have 170 something schools, you have 170 something different ways to do something. And I think Dr. Polio is right. When you have a standardized policy, you just create the conditions for less buy-in. And the reason that it's so successful at Fern Creek is it started there. There was collaboration. It was a process to survey and empathize with all the stakeholders. And so those, I think, are the factors that created success. And those are factors that in some of our schools are absent, you know, of every single district policy that we have, and particularly this one.
Doctor Nicholas, could you describe what the kids are like in the hall when they don't have phones?
They're adorable. Like I like them a lot better. I'll be on, and and like I said, I do have kind of a a long term view of the students at Fern Creek because I have been there for a very long time. And I was struck the first day because they were looking at me and saying good morning to me. And I was like, who who are you? So it really does. Look, I have teenagers too. I know how, you know, consuming these devices can be. I could not really, I could, it took me a long time even like realize like this is really happening. These students are interacting with each other. They're interacting with their teachers, with their administrators, with security in the hallways. They play board games in the cafeteria. They read books. Like it, it feels like a different space. And so, yes, it was a huge investment. I would do it again. I would do it 10 times over.
I just want everyone to hear that because I I went to Fern Creek and I saw it firsthand and it is amazing. And I think that's a big part of life is being able to interact with people face to face and adults especially as well. I will say this. Dr. Polio, how long do you think it would take for the district to collaborate with the stakeholders involved in this and and like come to a recommendation?
I mean, I I think we can come, we could come to a recommendation this spring. Okay, I mean, I thought, I don't think that's the coming to a recommendation for you all with a policy is is not the necessarily, I think the hard part about it is the hard part about it's getting buy-in from the people at school.
Yeah.
Ensuring that everyone is doing that work that Fern Creek is doing. I'll say, like, just the variability between teachers who may think, I don't mind a kid having it in my class and letting letting the kids use it because they don't see a problem with that. Or an administrator, an AP saying, that's not a big deal for me. I've got other things to deal with. And so that variability between is where this kind of leaks and then it starts to erode is when you don't have everyone on the same page. So I want to be clear, I think we could bring a recommendation, work with you all, do another session probably and bring a recommendation by the end of the school year. I think the harder part is definitely going to be the enforcement of it and ensuring that that it's happening at all 155 schools.
In regards to that enforcement, do you feel like it would be something that would be a monumental lift from central office or or some big costs to the district?
Well, no, not from central office. It would not be. I mean, this is school personnel. I mean, if we did the pouches, yes, it's $3 million. I'm not saying we can't do that, but we're going to have to find $3 million to cut somewhere else in order to do that right now. And so the cost is not an issue. I mean, you know, the the more concern I have is just the proliferation of some data around increased suspensions and things like that, which, you know, we're already struggling with 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 Office of Civil Rights as it is. Then the other hard part really is around special education students and you know, the the laws around special education as well and what we can do with removing them from class. So, no, it is not a big lift for central office at all. I mean, I just think it's more of a lift for the teachers and the administrators at the school level like Dr. Nicholas, who did this the right way.
And this is close to my heart. I've got a teenager in high school and I told her flat out when I got on the board, this is my number one thing I want to done. So I'm very excited that this is going. I will, from what I've seen, I I agree that I think that school level, what we've done at Fern Creek, it needs to maybe be different per school level, but I do think as a board, we do have to set some policy or expectation of this is, this is what we stand for as a group. It just, every piece of data points that this has got to be fixed and we cannot bend on this, in my opinion. So thank you guys for what you do.
Ms. Lister?
Excellent presentation. Thank you and very compelling. I mean, it looks to me clear like this is what we have to do, but we have to set policy and expectation, but not just that, also a promise. I think we have to make a promise to all the schools that we're going to help with the process, help with the buy-in, help with the education and be sure we're looking out for the civil rights issues of you know, disparate enforcement, how is enforcement going to happen? I mean, the pouches sound great. But it, you know, that teacher who feels like, well, I don't want to be the mean teacher in school, right? So everybody has to be on board with it. And so, you know, I think that's a promise that we need to make because the benefits are clear. The harms are extremely clear. And this was very compelling. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, something's got to be done. But my question is, how long did it take to develop this culture at Fern Creek?
So Fern Creek is, you know, a school that has a lot of people who've been there for a very long time. A lot of our faculty members are also alumni. So we have a long history of being collaborative. And this was pretty much an outgrowth of that collaborative process. As I said, Mr. Christian came to me. He's a very talented assistant principal and has a lot of, you know, credibility in the building. So he led that that team in the beginning and I sat in on the meetings. But I made it clear, like, this is not me. This is all of us together. This is not, you know, Rebecca says this is going to happen. And I think that was a really important part of it. We started the process last March, I think was our first meeting. And so, you know, it was a month's long process, really. And we didn't start with, like, this is definitely what we're going to do in mind. We had an open mind and really tried to entertain all the possibilities, listen to all the voices.
So did you phase it in or you just went headfirst?
We went cold turkey. I was very nervous on day one. But we had done a lot of work. We had, again, had parent meetings, notifications over the summer. We let kids know how it was going to work. Like I said, we also, as a team, scrimmaged every eventuality, like what happens if, what happens when? How are we going to do it this way, this way, this way? And so we felt prepared. And honestly, the first day, I think it was probably 10 o'clock and we were looking at each other, like, I can't believe that worked because it did. And honestly, we've we've not really had a hiccup since.
And and Dr. Polio, you mentioned this, smartwatches. I can do anything on my smartwatch that I can do on my phone. Is that an issue or no?
So we did entertain the question of do they, they'll fit in the pouch if it's an issue. You know, if a student is using any device disruptively, we are going to address it. And so you're always going to have outliers. We have students who now will carry around an iPad, but they'll use it like a cellphone, like we see you. And they're much bigger and, you know, there are one or two, one or two students versus 1,800 students. So it's much easier to address. I think we just made the commitment that as issues arise, we're going to deal with them with a consistent, you know, model of enforcement.
Yeah, I know it, Grace James. And again, that's why I ask about the culture of the school. Because they start at grade six, dropping their phones and it's just a little like something you'd put shoes in over the door. And they drop their phones in before they go into class and they get them one, once they come out of that class. And that's, again, a culture. That's the culture of the school. So thank you very much.
And I would add there, this, once again, I'll say this, this is my belief. Whatever is decided by this board is going to have to be probably adjusted multiple times in the future. Because I do believe the big tech companies are going to try to stay in front of this. They want to have kids keep their phones. They want them on all the time. So the last thing I think the big tech companies want is these decisions being made for kids at the board when they're most likely addicted to their to their screens. So just knowing that in three years, it could be a very different scenario that you're going to have to deal with at that time. Ms. Craig? Mr. Craig?
I don't think I could add much more to the conversation. This has been really rich and deep. Really appreciate your leadership. And very impressed with the outcomes that you've delivered with this policy. Congratulations to you. There was one stat in the Courier Journal article I didn't hear tonight about library usage. Do you know what I'm talking about? Could you tell, share that with us?
We had more books checked out in the first two weeks of the school year than we had the entire school year prior. So they're reading books, which is, you know, I'm a former English teacher, so that makes me extremely happy. But kids are engaging with each other. They're engaging with text. They're engaging in projects. The collaboration class has just been an incredible thing to see. So I do think that, you know, there will be difficulties. There will be challenges. It will test you. My concern was, and and we saw this with dress code, like, if we have a dress code, that's all we talk about, right? That's because we're always enforcing it. And I think that's something important to consider. You know, we're here to ensure teaching and learning happens and this isn't really that, right? So you're going to have to be distracted from some of your other work maybe for a little bit. But I think the payoff is that students are happier. They seem healthier. They're more engaged with each other. They're more engaged with the adults in the building.
Thank you. I, there's a tug of war in my brain happening right now between, my instinct is a hammer on the one end to replicate this, do whatever it's take. I hear on the other hand, the need for organic buy-in. I saw you shaking your head in response to all that, like, that's what everybody in the district is going to say. That's what we need to do. I don't know how to deliver that. Our our professional educators, our professional leaders should be able to know how to do that, right?
Yeah. And I mean, this, this is what I would say. I believe the expectation needs to be that there is school autonomy to make some decisions, that there should be some collective voice at the school level to make the decision at what's best to the school with us providing some parameters around it. I'll say again, I think a kid brings a phone out and confiscates a phone is not the right thing to do. We used to do that in the early 2010s, caused a lot of problems, students from poverty. I mean, their phone is their lifeline and to have someone take it from them, it it ends in really bad scenarios happening that usually escalate beyond you don't get your cellphone anymore. So I would really say, but we put some parameters on that. I think we can say our assistant superintendents and school leadership teams are going to have some expectations on checking this. Once again, there's only so much you can check. So just like Dr. Nicholas said, I mean, there's some give and take there. When you spend time checking to see if cell phones are out in school, you're not looking at something else. But I don't want to say central office washes their hands of this. We can do that and we can support it. But I really do believe that the autonomy model at the school with the school submitting some kind of plan to their assistant superintendent, this is how we're going to do it. These are the consequences. Here's how we're going to monitor it, all of those things. And then our assistant superintendents check to make sure that is actually happening and provide the support. In my mind is the best way where we're saying no cell phones. And if we come in and see them, that's a problem. So I think that can be done. It it definitely does not have the hammer approach, but probably long term, it's more likely to be successful in my mind.
I'm here with the hammer. If you tell me it will be successful. But I'm willing to make cuts elsewhere to fund $3 million if you tell us that's what we need to do as well. I think the benefits of this would be worth the investment by the full Board of Education. I feel like a motion would be in order tonight. I think the motion would be something in the line of a direction to bring us a policy that could be adequately implemented in time for the beginning of the 25, 26 school year. Oh, maybe the lawyers can help me. Is that a motion or just a consensus expectation from the panel? Do we need to make a motion?
It can be either. I think Dr. Polio is committed that that can happen. So.
I can't hear you.
Dr. Polio already intimated that they can bring a proposal when it's conducive for his staff. So we could expect that.
Okay. I hear from the chair that we'll have that proposal.
We will have that. We'll have a, we'll bring you back. And maybe in May, if that sounds like an opportunity that we could bring you back something that would be a policy and expectations from schools, things like that, that that would be a part of this as well.
And you're firm that you can get it done by May and May does get us teed up for August.
Yes.
Thank you.
But as I say all the time, it's up to the next schmuck to figure out if it's go, if it's actually happening in August.
Thank you all for this presentation. Dr. Nicholas, you are a rock star. Thank you for being a trailblazer. You should start thinking about what to do with meta glasses so that we're ahead of the curve on that, that's coming down the pike. But if there be no more questions, we'll bid you good evening. Thank you.
We promise we'll give you a break for a while, Dr. Nicholas, from having to come to board meetings.
All right, next is the superintendent search process update. We are proud to report that our district carried out nine forums during the week of February the 10th. There was a civic leaders forum, a business leaders forum, a teachers virtual forum of our JCPS teachers. The superintendent search advisory committee had a forum. There was a student virtual forum that was absolutely tremendous. The principal virtual forum, a classified staff virtual forum, and then two community and parent forums, one at Shani, at the academy at Shani and the other at Ballard. And so we would like to thank everyone who participated in those forums, all the community members who came out to participate, the elected officials, the business leaders. Our students were absolutely exceptional. And we want to thank them as well for their input. And we would also like to thank the staff, Mr. Kevin Brown, all of our media and tech staff, Chief Callahan, for helping us ensure that everything was technologically prepared for those forums. The superintendent screening committee election process has almost concluded with the election for those who will serve on the screening committee. We only have one outstanding election for the two JCP, JCTA teacher representatives that will occur this week and we'll have their names by Friday. The committee will be fully populated by Monday, March 3rd. As it relates to the other members of the committee, we have the board representative, Tricia Lister, the principal representative, Dustin Wittes, the classified employee representative, Dwan Williams, parent guardian representative, Brittany Abdallahad. parent guardian representative, Brittany Abdallahad. And then we have two teachers from JCTA that will have their names on Friday. At this time, Chief Dossett will present the results of the community survey.
Good evening.
Sorry.
I wanted to share, thank you, thank you. I've just, I think I would be prepared. I'm good now, thank you. Wanted to share the results from the survey that was administered in January and early February. So this was a survey that was developed previously for the superintendent search. And then the survey items were shared with the community advisory group that gave input. And so the final survey is a representation of the items and constructs that the community advisory group made recommendations around. The survey was open for 22 days from January 24th to February 14th. We had over 4,500 respondents to the survey. So I want to share preliminary results there in terms of what we've seen. We, the survey was anonymous, but we did ask a few questions around the respondents and who they were to tell us a little bit about themselves. We had representation from across the district in terms of where, where respondents lived. That little white zip code there is GE. So no respondents were living there, but everywhere else, we had 91% of the respondents lived within the county. 7% lived outside of the county and 3% chose not to provide their zip codes. We did see variations across respondents in terms of this, the board district in which they lived. Over half of the respondents didn't know which board district they lived in. But in general, the range was anywhere from 3 to 10% with about 4% on average across the board districts. And we also saw that about half of their respondents were JCPS parents. Ha, almost 45% were JCPS employees. They could select more than one category. We did have 6% of their respondents were students and 20% were, or almost 20% were from community members that identified as themselves as community members. The racial and ethnic group representation mirrors the county, not necessarily the district, but 61% of respondents were white, 21% African-American, 7% Hispanic or Latino. For the three highest racial and ethnic groups. And then there was a series of about 13 questions that asked around various skills, abilities, experiences, how important these qualities are in the next superintendent. And on a scale from one being low, low importance or priority to 10 being the highest. And so the first question was around how important the candidate's ability is to promote academic achievement of all students. 69% of respondents gave it the highest priority. And on average, again, between a scale of one to 10, the average was 9.2. In terms of promoting social emotional wellbeing, 57% gave it the highest rating and the average here was 8.8. The ability to improve results in low performing schools, 55.8% gave it the highest rating of 10 with an average of 8.8. The candidate's ability to lead a team, 68% of respondents gave it the highest rating, which are with an average of 9.3. The candidate's ability to implement policies to achieve staff diversity. Here, close to 40% gave it the highest rating with an average of 7.5. The ability to recruit and retain staff, 56% gave it the highest rating with an average of 8.9. How important is the candidate's ability to implement policies to meet the needs of students in the choice zone, multilingual learners, students with special needs? 52% gave it the highest rating with an average of 8.6. Ability to close the opportunity, achievement and resource gap, 46.7% gave it the highest rating with an average of 8.4. Ability to champion services to address mental health, 49.1% gave it the highest rating with an 8.5 average. Experience focusing on student behavior in the classroom, 61% gave it the highest rating with an average of nine. The ability to enhance relationships outside of JCPS had the highest priority there was 29.6 with an average of 7.6. The ability to improve JCPS transportation, oh, sorry, skip one. Improved JCPS facilities, 43.6% gave it the highest rating with an average of 8.5. Improved transportation was 52.8% was the highest rating there with an average of 8.6. And then the survey asked respondents to identify the single most important qualification for an ideal superintendent. And the highest rating, that's really hard to see, but the highest rating was around promoting academic achievement for all students that 33% of respondents selected that as the single most important qualification, followed by focus on student behavior at 16.3% and then lead a team at 8%. And then there's a series of open response items that we have shared this data with the search firm who will use this information as one piece of evidence when they're developing their leadership profile. That's a quick summary of the survey results.
I don't know that we can ask any of the constituents what they were thinking when they responded, but I wanted you to have an overview of the survey as it has been returned to the district. And that will guide us and it is guiding the executive search firm in the creation of the leadership profile, which is underway now and will come to us at our next meeting. Thank you, Dr. Dossett. All right, well. Well, now you can, I guess, just come on back, Dr. Dossett for the student outcomes focus governance update.
I think you got some people here with you. They're going to help you this time. So I will start if that's okay, Chair Scholl, and then I'll kick it over to Ms. Logan Strange, who's going to do some leadership with, this is, these are guardrails. This is the first guardrail that we are doing monitoring of the guardrails. So it is a little bit different. I don't think there's as clean of data to say, like reading and math scores that we can just point to here. So understand that, you know, these are always not as clean as those things are, but we are doing our best to report to you where we are on the guardrails based, based upon the goals that we have set. So Ms. Logan Strange, I'll turn it to you.
Yeah, our guardrails, they represent the community values, the community's values and what we need to do to protect and reach our goals. And so we've got guard rail number three and there's three key points there. Staff perceptions of teacher's voice and leadership, parent and staff communication, as well as collaborative district and school leadership teams. So those are the three areas that we will be focusing on. And Dr. Dossett and others will tell us how we're progressing.
All right, we'll start with teacher and voice, or teacher, voice and leadership, staff perceptions of that. So I think that goes to Cynthia.
Yes, that goes to me. So if you look, research indicates that we have improved outcomes when teachers feel more involved in decision-making and when they feel empowered and a part of the process. So part, as you see on the slide before you, what we've, that, that not only enhances our retention rate, but it also improves our student outcomes. So as we move through, as we move through this, what we have done is we have partnered with Upbeat, which is a survey that we send out to our teachers and our staff. And they measure those two, two questions are what we focus on, which is leadership opportunities and input. Do they feel like they have active input in their building and do they have leadership opportunities? You will see that we have increased those, those numbers, 78% feel in the spring of 2024 have improved those, those, well, let me back up. We originally surveyed on 79 questions. We reduced those numbers down to 70 with input from our staff and with input from Upbeat. We are focusing on two questions. Those two questions are, do our teachers feel that their administrative team actively seeks their input in important decision-making and do they feel that they have leadership opportunities? Those are the two questions that have been surveyed over time, over the course of the upbeat process. And in looking at those, we have gains in those areas. So and as you'll see, the leadership opportunities, we have 74% believe in that they have active input as opposed to 88% believing that they have leadership opportunities. So we would like to see an area of growth. We would like to improve that 74% number, obviously. Now that has already increased over the time we have been doing these measurements. As part of the upbeat process, when these results come back, leadership is encouraged to share those with their stakeholders. They are provided coaching from the upbeat staff and from our staff. I will say Marco Munoz leads that effort in HR. He meets with those individuals and he meets with the upbeat staff as well to make sure that this data is being used by the buildings to improve those numbers. When we talk about retention, one note that's not on your slide that I do believe corresponds with what we're talking about, our retention rates in 22, 23 were 93.5% in 23, 24, 94.9. And right now we're on track at 94.6. That is above the national average, which is 86%. So when you look at those numbers, I think all of those factors go together in, in how, once we can get our teachers here, how we keep them here. And I think this is vital to that work.
Carolyn?
For guard rail 3.2, it is focused on parent and staff communication. And we have several different ways and methods that we use to communicate both at a district level and at a school level. We are currently working to streamline that process as well so that we are going to see even better data when we come back. But we have really good data to show you right now as well when we're talking about this. So what we're looking at when it comes to this guardrail is our JCPS Insider. We have a family edition and we have an employee edition. That is our newsletter that goes out and you'll see constant contact. The reason it says constant contact, that is the platform that we use to send this email messaging. We are going to be changing that to a different platform called Engage because we believe we are going to be able to access more families and more staff members in a more easy to read and welcoming format. And we'll get these numbers even higher than they are. But our goal is to increase these open rates. You will see that we're already doing a great job of that. We are at 54.7, 54.7% open rate in the fall of 2024. If you look back to the fall of 2021, we were at 35.3%. Our current open rate is way above the national average. Constant contact, all of their education partners that they work with, their customers, their average open rate is only 39.5%. So we know that our families and our staff are, are opening these communications. They are reading it, but we do still have some room to improve there. So what are we doing? First, we used to send these newsletters five days a week. We cut that back to three times a week because if it's every day, people start ignoring it. They're not opening it. So three days a week, we have seen really great results there. We also know that Wednesday is our highest open rate. So Wednesdays are the days, the middle of the week where people are, are opening more. We're also trying to make these more visually appealing, having pictures in there, having graphics that folks, they want to open it, they want to see what's going on. And we have a quicker turnaround than we've ever had. If you are, we accept from every department can give us something to put in either of these newsletters. And as long as you get it to us by three o'clock, we're probably going to be able to get it in for you, either Monday, Wednesday or Friday, or tell you we can get it in the next day. So we have heard from staff that that has been a big benefit because they know that we can get even more information out to our families and to our staff members. Our staff addition rate does have a, they have a lower open rate than our family. 46% for our staff, 56% on the family. So we are going to work on increasing that staff open rate. We will be letting staff members know about these at their new employee orientation. We'll be letting them know how to sign up for the insider, that this is available. We're also going to be providing that we've never done before, information to our schools to provide at their open houses for their families to sign up for the insider so that they know that it's existing. So we're going to be putting more information. As I said, we are making a switch to a new platform that we are really excited about, that we are doing, going to be unleashing a marketing campaign for that to really be pushing our families and our staff members to make sure that they are signing up for this information. But we're making great strides and we will continue to increase those open rates and get people to have the important information that they need.
And finally, we will talk about our collaborative district and school leadership team. So I'll give that to Robert.
Thank you, Dr. Polio, and good evening again. Guard rail 3.3 collaborative district and school leadership team. I have one of the few guardrails or interim metrics that is actually codified. It in our JCTA contract dictates that we have both a school level and a district level 50/50 collaborative leadership team. I'm a member of the district level, district level school leadership team. But just like my colleagues, we've also provided you with a brief summary of the research that indicates it is best practice for student outcomes. And you can see those best practice research bullets on this particular page. This slide is a general overview of the interim metric, which reads the percentage of collaborative teams that haven't identified a problem of practice will increase from 0% in June 2024 to 100% by June 2027. You can see we are on track to meet that interim metric in December. 146 schools had established a collaborative leadership team. In January, those teams were to establish co-leads administratively and for our JCTA members. And then in February, starting this month is when they started, start to develop their problem of practice, transition to April and May where they get feedback on those problems of practice from our, our support, our district support and from our zone, zone leaders. And the next slide, it's really just a more, builds on the timeline with just a few more details. If you look at those effective strategies, it gives the, the numbers of the COTs. 146, I believe, I got a text from Dr. Stroud that we're up to 149. That leaves only one school. We had some late principal hires as well. We didn't have those COT teams developed yet. So we're up to 149 that have established and they're actively engaged with the trainings. We have district support for our, our teacher, members of those leadership. Uh, we have district support for our, um, our teacher, uh, members of those leadership teams, uh, Alan Young. And then, uh, Dr. Fay Stroud is helping us out and is assisting with the leadership, uh, uh, development, um, and providing resources. They both collaborated, uh, to form a, um, a Google classroom that has resources, uh, as well as progress monitoring tools, so we can track those, uh, those problems of practice in the district, in formation of district leadership teams. There's some, uh, opportunities for growth. Obviously, we need to get that, uh, it says four schools, but we need to get that last, uh, team developed, uh, so it's really just one. And then just drawing your attention to that last bullet, encouraging, uh, shared learning and feedback loops. Uh, once all these problems of practice are uploaded, uh, Dr. Stroud is going to do an analysis and really, uh, group those problems of practices, so these school-level teams can collaborate. So there's, we're already seeing some common problems of practices. That way we can let them know, hey, these four schools have the same problems of practice as you, and they can cross collaborate, uh, on these school-level teams. So, uh, that's a, an important growth area for us. And you see the next steps again, early spring, looking at those problems of practices, giving our, uh, those teams some feedback. And then by, uh, late spring, have those fully developed problems of practice, uh, which again, our leadership team has done a really good job of just, uh, spelling out how that problem of practice. If you do this, then if we do this, then this is going to be the results. And it's a real, um, uh, simplified, uh, way to develop a problem of practice. That way they have the resources and the training for the summer, ready to go for next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
So got some information from the Council of Greater City Schools. And so, um, when we reach as a board, um, eighty points consistently, and this is through one board cycle of election. So I'm the only one that has been there yet. So we haven't really had a whole cycle. Then that's considered, I guess, a success when we do our self-evaluations. And so right now, we're, as of October twenty-four, we have ten points. So we have a little bit of ways to go, but, um, we're working on it. So, yeah. And then I have a question for, um, Carolyn. So you said that we have an open rate of thirty-six percent in twenty-one, twenty-two, and it's now, um, up to sixty, sixty-one percent?
We're now at fifty-four point seven percent in the fall.
Right. So, but what is the actual click-through rate?
I can get that for you. We didn't pull that for this.
Okay, and the other click-through rate and the pass-along rate? And then how many languages do we send?
This will, it will translate into any, we send it in English, but it will translate, yes.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have.
All right, thank you all so much for this presentation. Are there any questions from anyone? Okay, thank, Ms. Duncan, do you have?
Well, I noticed the teacher active input and the teacher leadership opportunity rates increased, but it's from spring to fall. So that five, that, uh, five percent jump on, uh, teacher active input, how, how does that increase over the summer? Um, it, do we, does it matter how it did, it just did? Um, it, are there factors involved here that might have, uh, created that bump? Um, but, uh, because, what, what struck me was it's spring to fall. So that puts summer in between there, and I don't know, I don't know what opportunities were going on in the summer.
Well, so one thing that I think is also important to notice here is that it actually also increases from fall to spring each year. So you're right, it did improve from fall, from spring to fall, but each year it's gotten a little bit when it comes to active input. It, it went, it stayed the same in, um, oh, I'm sorry, from fall of twenty twenty-two to spring of twenty twenty-three, it went from sixty-two to sixty-eight. And then from fall of twenty twenty-three, it was sixty-nine. Spring, it was sixty-nine. So we're seeing increases each, um, cycle that it's administered. And I think part of that has to do with the coaching and what, um, the principals and the admin teams are doing based on those results to, um, coach and improve working conditions. And then I think also in general, people are a little bit happier in the fall.
Well, and to add to that, um, I, I also think that as you start the school year, over the summer, you have professional development and learning, um, which increases confidence and competency. And then how, um, leadership opens the building for the year and how they set that year, um, how they set that in motion, the tone that they set for their teams. Uh, so I think all of those factors can weigh in to those scores in the fall. Um, also, as, as we, uh, the engagement in the survey itself has increased from eighty-one percent to eighty-three percent. So, um, as people are looking forward to that, they're thinking about how they're going to answer that, and they're really paying more attention to what's going on in their building and how it's affecting them, knowing that they're going to cha- get a chance to, to share that information. So I think maybe you see that as this progresses over time.
Very good, thank you. Oh, on the collaborative leadership, uh, team that, or teams that we're forming, um, there's one problem, and it's a problem of practice. Does that mean instructional practice or other kind of practice? What, what does problem of practice mean?
It's a fifty-fifty decision, so the, uh, it has to be by consensus. So they'll come, look at the needs of their schools or the needs of their, their students, and they'll come to a consensus of what their problem of practice is for their specific school. Uh, and we'll still vet that through the assistant subs and EAs, uh, to make sure it's an appropriate, uh, problem of practice. Uh, but we still wanna, uh, we, we, we still wanna, uh, really, uh, make sure that we, uh, honor the, the feelings of the fifty-fifty committee. So, yeah.
Well, can you, can you give an example of a problem of practice that somebody's working?
Yeah. Make sure my team's here.
Thank you.
Um, honestly, the Fern Creek cell phone is a perfect example of a school tackling a problem of practice. Um, because you dealt with a, 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 a group that came to consensus, utilized and empowered stakeholder engagement and feedback to make that decision that empowered the whole community. So that's just a, an example that we've actually used with our school teams. Um, but it can vary. It's a lot of schools that is looking at needs assessment data, they're collecting their data, and they're identifying a problem. It could be social, emotional, it could be behavior, it could be academics, but it's really tailored to what the school needs, and you will see variation.
Okay, thank you. But related to that, um, if the problem of practice is something, I mean, that the team is JCTA, district person, administrative leadership in the building, can the team expand into other state, uh, stakeholders? Or is it just going to be those three?
No, um, because when you think about the identification of the members, um, administration identified representatives, JCTA voted for their memberships, so they're representing a bigger body. So the expectation is you still should be communicating with the bigger body because you're serving the community, the community as a whole.
Okay, but if the, if the problem is, uh, bleeds over beyond instructional kinds of things, would we include a stakeholder from some other group?
That's possible, but that's on the team to work through as a consensus body.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all so much. You all have a wonderful evening. Thank you for your work. Is there a motion to receive the goal monitoring report on interim metrics for guard rail three? Protect inclusive decision-making. Ms. Lister, seconded by Ms. Duncan, all in favor? Thank you very much. Chief Callahan now will play the video statement regarding public participation in meetings.
In accordance with Board Policy zero-one dot four-two-one, the Board expects that persons who have signed up to address the Board will limit their remarks to the subjects that they listed at the time they signed up, that their presentation will not include any defamatory or abusive remarks about the subject, and that they will present the remarks in a manner that is consistent with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Also, in accordance with Board Policy, the Board reserves the right to limit, extend, or terminate discussion on any subject. Discussion of personnel matters is not permitted as state law requires that personnel matters are within the sole authority of the superintendent. The speaker may not initiate charges or complaints against an individual district employee by name or position in order to ensure confidentiality and fairness for the employee. Speakers before the entire Board are not allowed to use props, displays, or any other objects during their remarks. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the Board and may not share these minutes with any other speaker. At the end of two and a half minutes, a bell will sound once. You will then have thirty seconds to finish your statement. At the end of three minutes, the bell will sound twice, indicating that your time is up. The superintendent will look into the speaker's issues and if necessary, represent the Board in following up or recommend action to the Board. The full Board policy concerning public participation in open meetings is available for viewing on our website and at our sign-in sheet.
Sophia Randall.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sophia Randall, and I'm a junior at Eastern High School. I'll ask the people here to support my cause to please stand. I'm here to speak on behalf of my school and my peers, present and not, on why JCPS should provide funding to keep the Japanese teaching position at Eastern. Courses like Japanese allow students to learn about something they're actually interested in and to feel driven to explore something they enjoy and are passionate about. At Eastern, Japanese offers students an opportunity to not only learn a language, but to learn about a culture vastly different from their own, to interact with native speakers, and to pursue a career abroad. By removing the Japanese teaching position at Eastern, you are not only getting rid of these opportunities from current students, but future ones as well. We must realize that we are not just taking away a teacher, we are taking away a program. By doing this, are we going against our own values? Should students aspire to be globally and culturally competent citizens? How can they do this if we are removing those chances from them? We should promote and encourage students to take these courses, not get rid of them. It is the responsibility of the School Board to make decisions that benefit the futures and education of our students. I asked you to reconsider removing the Japanese teaching position at Eastern and to provide funding so it can continue to teach and inspire the students of Eastern High School. Thank you.
Daniela Garcia Basalo.
You think it's him?
Yes, against the board.
Okay, so I'm going to talk about the problem with, um, eliminating the inclusive clubs for Hispanic, BSUs, Asian, um, and gay, straight eliminations. These clubs aren't just about culture. They're about belonging. Without them, students from marginalized backgrounds lose a vital spot, support system. It becomes even harder to have our voices heard, to feel seen, and to bring our perspective into the classrooms. When you take away diversity organizations, you're not just taking away a meeting place. You're taking away representation, advocacy, and the chance for students to feel like they truly belong. And if you're ever felt unheard, invisible, or like you didn't fit in, then you know exactly why that matters. I understand the pressure you're under, and I know there's ne- never enough going around, uh, school, money and going around schools. But if you were to ask the majority of students in JCPS, I guarantee most would rather keep this poor from these organizations than see that money goes elsewhere. Yes, the lack of funding is an issue, but without these clubs, schools would have the money. But why does it matter if the students would feel out of place and lacking a sense of belonging? Making these clubs illegals would make our voices illegal too. Thank you.
Isabella Avila Gonzalez.
Good evening, and my name is Isabella. I am the Vice President of the Seneca HSU. I'm going to continue my comment in Spanish because a large part of our community is Hispanic and deserves to understand the message too. Para mí, tener grupos hispanos significa estar rodeada de personas que entienden mi cultura, mi idioma y mis experiencias. Es un espacio donde me siento apoyada, puedo hacer conexiones valiosas y mantener vivas mis raíces mientras sigo creciendo en este país. Además, me da la oportunidad de desarrollarme como líder, aportar a la, a la presentación hispana y asegurarme de que nuestra voz se escuche. Siendo vicepresidenta de HSU, esto es aún más importante porque me permite conectar con quienes represento y trabajar por nuestra comunidad. Eliminar estos espacios no prueba la igualdad, sino que borra las diferencias en lugar de celebrarlas y valorarlas. Thank you.
Chris Harmer. Luciana Bor- Borg? Luciana Borg? Ilana Kamenetsky? Kamenetsky?
Can I do that?
Uh, give the Board's assistant, please.
Okay. Uh, good evening, members of the JCPS School Board. My name is Elena Kamenetsky. I am the Japanese teacher at Eastern High School, also the faculty sponsor for the Eastern High School Japanese Club, the Eastern High School chapter of the National Japanese Honor Society, the Eastern High School Japanese Speech Contest Team. I also organize Eastern's Global Classmates PemPal Exchange with Japanese school every year, and I take Eastern students on a summer trip to Japan every two years. In twenty twenty-three, I arranged for a Japanese assistant teacher from Japan to come to Eastern High School and co-teach my classes for two years. I had planned to enroll in the same program again this coming year so that the next cohort of Eastern students could also have a Japanese native speaker co-teaching their classes. But then I got overstaffed. Um, I know that enrollment at Eastern has gone down. I also know that my number of students is lower than average for two reasons. One is that I teach Japanese one through four, and upper-level language classes like Japanese three and four always have small enrollments. The other reason is that I used to teach Japanese one through four and the HAFPA course, which meant that I had five preps every day. I had five preps for many years, but when given the chance to limit my teaching to four preps, I jumped at the chance. So I lost the HAFPA course, but in hindsight, that was probably how my numbers ended up so low and why I'm standing before you today. If my position at Eastern is cut, the Japanese program at Eastern ends. The Japanese program has been an integral part of Eastern High School since even before my time. I inherited the program from the amazing Ms. Sylvia Schneider. Since Schneider's sense of retirement, I have been growing the Japanese program for the past fifteen years. Someday, I'd hope to hand over the reins to another Japanese teacher. But if I leave Eastern now, there is no Japanese teacher to take my place. Japanese at Eastern will end. Let me be absolutely clear about one thing. This isn't about me personally. I don't mind being transferred to another school. I can teach no matter where I am. The reason that I'm kicking up a fuss this evening isn't for my sake, it's for their sake. And once again, could I have Eastern stand up? Yay, all right, thank you. It's for, it's so that Eastern's Japan trips and the PemPal exchange and the National Japanese Honor Society don't have to end. It's for the Japanese one students who won't be able to take Japanese two next year and will have to start all over again with a different language to fulfill their two-year language requirement for college readiness. They are the reason that I'm speaking to you tonight. So what is the solution here? The solution has to come in two parts. The first, the reason that I am here this evening is to request that the JCPS School Board approve funding for one more position at Eastern High School so that the sole and only Japanese teacher doesn't have to get overstaffed. The second part, the premise I'm making to you, is that I will continue to raise enrollment numbers. I will teach that HAFPA course. I will take five preps. That will justify me keeping that extra position. I have with me this evening copies of a petition signed by over two hundred Eastern students, alumni, and family members, requesting that the School Board approve funding for one more position at Eastern High School. And there are also comments left on the petition. One father even wrote, and I quote, "The Japanese pro-"
Bianca Ricardo Ogella?
Uh, hello, I am the Seneca HSU secretary. If I should use or cancel, I will lose the community that helps me feel like I'm not alone, to understand what I have gone through. It's a place that I truly feel understood. I and other members of our community will lose that, the sense of belonging. I simply ask you, don't isolate us. Also, our HSU is presenting just as fast as Saturday. We're inviting you. It's at two thirty. Thank you.
Where is it, where will it be held?
The Muhammad Ali Center.
The Muhammad Ali Centers? The Muhammad Ali Center. And what's the title again? What's the name of the event?
Uh, Justice Fest.
The Justice Fest, you've been there.
Okay, I have. Is it Muhammad Ali, what time?
Two thirty.
Two thirty. All right, we got it.
Thank you.
The chairs allowed me to, to the Eastern High School students and the teacher. This was a decision by the Eastern High School principal in collaboration with the SPDM. The Board of Education wasn't involved in it. I share your concern. I love the program. I'll share those sentiments directly with the SPDM myself. We are legally prohibited from interfering in the decision. But I share the sentiment. Thank you.
And I will add, even if we did add an additional spot, we can't dictate what that's for. So that is a school and an SPDM decision.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar minus? N, O, W eighteen, W nineteen, and ZDD? Is there a motion? Ms. Craig, seconded by Ms. Lister, all in favor? Thank you. All right, Ms. Strange has requested to pull down consent item N and consent item O?
Yes, and this deals with the, the property purchase on Terry Road. And I'm assuming that's for Grace James.
Correct.
First of all, I think to remove Grace James from District One is a mistake. I thoroughly understand the reality of real land that has to be available to build a school, the caliber that we want Grace James to be, and the facility that we want Grace James to be. And I understood at one time that you were in negotiations or in talks, and in fact have a memorandum, had a memorandum of understanding about property, I believe, on Hill Street. So if you could just tell me what happened and how we got to Terry Road.
Sorry, what, which property is the Hill Street one?
Uh, Redland Development Group.
The one across from the Norton's, right?
Um, no, the one, and I don't have it with me. But, so I'll rephrase that, that there was property within District One that was available, but it went away.
So we have worked on a multitude of properties in District One to try to get this done. One of those, we heard pitches from them, but never got any specific proposal or anything that we could do. The one across from the Norton track, we really, really wanted that. We, the Russell, I believe it's, correct me if I'm wrong, the Russell Neighborhood Association, or a group in Russell, had a pitch contest a couple summers ago. We made a pitch for that land to build Grace James there. They informed us that we did not win that pitch competition, that the neighborhood wanted something besides a school there. So we did not have that as well. And so our challenge is with a middle school, finding twenty to thirty acres of property to, to build a middle school that is not in, you know, where a factory has been or things like that. And so that is a major challenge for us, that we have hunted for multiple years to find property in District One that has not been successful.
Okay. And I think this other property was on Hill Street. But like I said, I thoroughly un-
That's in the, that's in the Park Hill. And, and I still think they're several years away from being to a point where that would become. So there are some options out there, but it's a matter of time as well. That would be several years away before we would have any opportunity to get that land and begin building a school. So in my belief, you would be talking five or six years before we would have a school for Grace James.
Okay. That's in the Park Hill area. Yeah. Okay, that, that was my question.
Did, did the Park Hill property have enough acreage for us to build a middle or high school on that property?
Uh, that is still debatable at this time because I think the purchase of land is still like in flux right now, and that's why it was going to take some time for that to happen.
Okay, because when I heard from them, they said that they were just waiting on JCPS to respond. So I, I don't know. I know that the principal and the community want for, for Grace James to have a state-of-the-art building. I'm just disappointed that it's leaving.
I understand completely, and I do not think that's correct about that area on Hill Street. So I think that was an issue that I just don't, I don't find to be correct. And I will say this, a lot of development right now are looking for things outside of a school to be built in these developments, whether that's retail, whether that's condominiums, things like that. Schools don't necessarily bring in the money that some of these other might bring in. So that's an issue right now that we have been fighting for a good deal of time, including the land for Hudson Middle School, as we've talked about.
Yes. Thank you. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Duncan has asked to pull down W eighteen and W nineteen. Ms. Duncan?
Well, I'm just going to ask a quick question about W eighteen. That is, I think the stipends for Hudson Middle School. And am I correct in reading that, that they get the eight thousand dollar stipend plus at the end of the year, an additional seven thousand dollars? Is that, is that?
That is correct.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to know that. That's it.
Are you going to address W nineteen?
No, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Speaking of Grace James, my, I mean, Hudson, may I just say one thing? Monday night, an organization that I belong to volunteered at Hudson Middle School. It was simply amazing.
Right.
It was amazing to see the parental turnout, parental engagement, the number of fathers, not just mothers, that came through that building was just astounding.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Great, that's good news. Mr. Craig has asked to pull down DD.
Uh, this is the school calendar. Recommendation is to forgive the four school days. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I vote against these each time that it comes up. This is four days of instructional opportunity for students throughout the district. It's fully funded. There's no cost savings by forgiving it. There's no additional cost to the district, I'm told, by extending the calendar. Our students have suffered through significant learning loss over the last couple of years through NTI, through transportation challenges, through other weather-related challenges. I just generally oppose forgiving these days, even if it means that we're in school in June. The most recent comment I heard from superintendent's office was that there was a potential impact on test score results. Is that right? Can you elaborate on that for me? Do you mind?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So one of the things that we struggle with, I want everyone to know when we talk about test scores, if a student does not show up during testing, they get an automatic novice. And so what a lot of people don't understand out there is a lot of novices may be kids who have just not shown up to school. By state law, we have to give the test in the last fourteen days of school, meaning that a lot of, that last week is going to be some testing. What we have seen over about the past seven or eight years, when we go past Memorial Day, there's about, on average, a ten percent dip in attendance across the district. So, you know, and some even more, fifteen, or we've had as low as seventy-one percent when it comes after Memorial Day. So my concern, and I agree with you a hundred percent, loss of learning time, I think is, you know, we work hard to have learning time. I think the, the concern I would have is the number of novices we may just get because we're pushing back testing now a week. I hate to make any decisions on that, but that is a reality, that a lot of decisions will be made next fall and October based upon these test scores. So that's my concern, not necessarily going into, after Memorial Day or going into June. That's not a concern for me at all, but I think it's the attendance and the impact on testing that it could have.
I appreciate the concern. It's legitimate, well reasoned, support it. I think my view is still the same, that we should still have the days of instruction for our students. So that's how I'll vote on this. Thank you. Mr. Everett?
Just a question. I learned this last night. Just, JCPS has five extra days, the most issues. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, that is correct. And the entire state is struggling right now. We are actually one of the fortunate ones with missed days, as you can imagine, because some of the other catastrophes that are happening around the state, they're having to make some, some changes to that. So there's a total number of hours that have to be met, seat hours, so to speak, and that's at a hundred and seventy days. So our calendar is usually right at about five days above the needed amount. So that's why you can forgive a day. If we only scheduled one seventy, we, we wouldn't even have this in front of you. We would just add it on to the end of the school year.
And how long have we, like, how long has that been going on?
As long as I've been in JCPS.
Yeah.
Yep. So we, just to add to that, too, we have a certain number of days that staff are, like, so teachers are calendared. So if we went less days, that would obviously be cutting into salaries of teachers, less workdays for teachers and other staff. So it's been this way. I think the teacher contract's a hundred and eighty-six days with professional development and all of those things. And so I do want to be clear, at Mr. Craig's point, there's no cost saving to this because teachers will be working still those four extra days. So to your point, this is not, and I want everyone to know, forgiving the days has nothing to do with cost saving. We will still have the same overhead that we have whether we go to school or forgive those days.
And when we're looking for funding for extra enrichment opportunities over the summer, this seems like four paid for days that we could provide our most advanced students. Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to approve consent item N? Ms. Craig, seconded by Mr. Bass, all in favor? Thank, all in favor? Thank you. Is there a motion to approve consent item O? Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Bass, all in favor? All right, thank you. Consent item W eighteen. Is there a motion to approve consent item W eighteen? Mr. Craig, seconded by Ms. Lister, all in favor? Thank you. Is there a motion to approve consent item W nineteen? Ms. Duncan, seconded by Ms. Craig, all in favor? I just have it. Is there a motion to approve consent item DD?
This is the calendar. Is that correct?
Ms. Duncan, seconded by Mr. Everett, all in favor? Please keep your hands raised. Bass, Duncan, Everett, Lister, Strange, Shaw, for the record, all opposed. Mr. Craig, for the record, thank you. All right. At eight twenty-four PM, we are adjourned. Have a good evening.